My Father, how grateful we are for another day that we can come before you. We thank you, Lord, for this leadership team of our city. And we pray a mighty blessing upon Mayor Martini and all of the council members as they bring business before them. Lord, you already know what the business at hand is going to be, so we're asking for wisdom for each one of them to know how to vote and the things that need to be done. Thank you too that we have the opportunity to come before the God of the universe, to thank you for a time such as this where we can, in freedom, come to these meetings and voice our opinions, where the people are heard. We thank you for that. Thank you too for watching over our beloved city. And we pray that you would direct, protect, and provide for us all here in Sparks. Lord, would you be with all of the guys as they take the challenge for the LDS, the ALS water pour over them? Oh, Lord, just help them not freeze to death and to be fine with that challenge. We thank you that they're able to do it. Hear our prayer now, Lord. Come, in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you Pastor Weston. The LDS one will probably be a little tougher.
I didn't realize I'd signed up for a baptism.
Yeah, the buckets might be a little bigger for the LDS one. If you'd remain standing for the pledge of allegiance, Mr. Lawson, would you lead us please?
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next up, we have public comment. Anyone from the public want to speak under public comment? I have no speaking cards.
I have one here, but I'll read under the item.
Under the item, okay.
Eleven one.
Okay, seeing no one under public comment, approval of the agenda. Anybody want to take anything out of order? If not, looking for a motion, Mr. Schmidt.
Motion approved as written.
Mr. Schmidt.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Schmidt, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve the agenda outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. 6.1, consideration possible approval of minutes of the regular Sparks City Council meeting of August 11, 2014. Any omissions or corrections, Ms. Ratty?
Move to approve as presented.
Mr. Lawson.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Lawson to approve the minutes of August 14th. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, let's move on to seven announcements, presentations. First up, we have a presentation from Edon on 2014 economic development. Mr. Kazmierski, how are you? Welcome.
Let's see. There it is. I've got a short update on what's going on at Edon. Councilman Lawson is on the board and has probably given you feedback as well, but this is just kind of a summary of our past year, our fiscal year closed out at the end of June. And so we have some numbers here that we'll go over for your information and then any questions you may have as well. I'll go through this kind of quick because you've seen some of this information before. The numbers obviously have changed a little bit. Our focus is simply on quality jobs, attracting, retaining, and entrepreneurial growth. We're pretty excited by the reduction in unemployment from a high of 14.2 not that long ago to now 7.3 with an expectation that will be down below seven before, certainly before the end of this year. Still 16,000 unemployed, so we've got a lot of work to do, but a pretty good move in the right direction. We focus, as you know, on primary jobs or base jobs. These are jobs that bring wealth into the region. Microsoft or Apple sells their products somewhere else, and when they sell their products somewhere else, that wealth comes into our region and creates a lot of other good activity. That percentage of our economy here, only 4% of the companies currently in this region are considered primary, so it allows us to focus our energies on that 4%. A lot of good multiplier effects associated with it. In doing that, we attract, we focus on these three legs, and you've seen these before, attraction, retention, entrepreneurial growth. I did want to touch on the companies that we assisted in relocation this past year. The first ten here with the red or pink or salmon or whatever color you want to call it, highlighted, actually landing here in the city of Sparks. So some good wages and jobs there, job numbers. And you can see it, a lot of people think they're all from California, and that's not the case. A couple are, and in fact, between 30 and 40% overall are from California, but we do market to the entire country. And because of our strategic location, distribution is, and manufacturing is really where we're having the most success. And in the last half year, again, only a few other California there, manufacturing, distribution, and some service, e-commerce. So that's on the announcement. On the expansion side, which is where we spend a lot of energy as well, as companies, when they look to expand, can expand anywhere. And many of these companies have multiple sites throughout the country, and we compete against their other sites as to where they're going to grow. So when we can get them to grow here, it's always a good thing. And these are companies in the region that we helped to assist, assisted them in the expansion, worked their incentive package, helped them get workforce issues, things like that. So a pretty good year for us in 2013, and for the city of Sparks, some good numbers there, clearly some growth, and I would say this is just the tip of the iceberg as we go forward. As we look at jobs over the last many years, we were averaging about 850 or so a year. In the last three years, that number's gone up pretty dramatically, and the reason it goes up is because our prospect visit numbers have gone up pretty dramatically as well. We put most of our marketing efforts towards getting a company to actually come here. If we can get a company to come here, and many of you have experienced that with family, friends, other businesses, they don't know what's here. And so our goal is to get them to the region, show them what we have, and once they do that, our closure rate's over 70%. So our focus was from the very beginning to get the visits, these visits up. And you can see we continue to have success in this area. This year is especially strong. So pretty exciting. What this tells you is those job numbers going forward will go up as well. So that's all pipeline numbers. You're probably talking anywhere between six and 18 months after a visit when we actually get the jobs here. So when you keep seeing that number go up, it tells you those job numbers will continue to go up. On the retention side, we're pretty excited by the efforts and support of the companies here. Nancy McCormick has been out visiting many of the companies, in fact, over 400, quite a few here in the city of Sparks. And thank you for your support and involvement in her visitation program. That's been very important. Companies want to know government cares. And oftentimes, the media and the headlines talk about the companies that are new, and the companies that are here already say, "What am I, chopped liver?" You need to go out and show the love. So that's part of this visitation program. In addition, we find out if they have problems, if they're struggling, if they have issues, and if we can help them with their problems or help them connect to other businesses in the region, they find a reason to stay here and grow. So this program's been very successful to date. And clearly, jobs associated with expansion are an important part of our overall job numbers. And the really good companies, by the way, are getting calls from other communities. Our high-growth, high-tech, more successful companies are getting offers. And when we visit these companies, sometimes we're in there and they say, "You know, I just got an offer from Texas. I just got an offer from Utah, and they're going to give me a free building, or they're going to give me whatever." And we want to make sure they know the grass is not always greener, they need to stay here and grow here. And some of the things we do in the program, obviously, this is all part of it, we have a recognition program, and this is our third year, this October, middle of October, I think, the 14th or 15th, and we certainly would encourage you to join us for that. This is a chance to recognize our existing industry and celebrate what they do for our community. And you'll get an invite for that. And just some of the issues, government friction is a big one. Most of you know, companies that, you know, leave California, leave it for taxes partially, but more likely because the government's harassing the hell out of them. And that's a big deal, and the fact that we have a very favorable government here to business is very, very important. So that's part of the issues, and when we bump into someone that has a problem, we work through your team, if it isn't the city of Sparks, to help resolve those issues. And our experience is it's been very responsive and very supportive. Finally, on entrepreneurial job creation, I'll tell you that this is really, in my view, the most important leg of economic development. If we're looking ahead five, 10, 20 years, allowing our talent to stay here, we need to help companies grow. And to help them grow, we do a lot of things in the entrepreneurial ecosystem to connect them, to help them find capital, to provide mentoring, and this program is really starting to get traction. In fact, the national media on our entrepreneurial program has been very positive, and we expect some more recognition in the coming months, in part because we're starting to really show success here, helping people connect and helping them start up. The four areas we focus on here, communicate, catalyze, connect, and showcase, each have sub areas that we put energy behind, but at the end of the day, if someone can grow a company here and be successful here, it's not just the first two or three jobs, it's the potential for tens or hundreds of jobs in the years ahead. So helping companies grow is a big part of this effort. You can see net job growth from startups nationally. If we can help them grow here, it really shows where jobs are created at a very significant rate in the startup area. And then under the entrepreneurial ecosystem, government does not know these companies exist for the first three phases there, inspire, learn, and create. They're not going to get to the point where they fire, file for a business license and now become an entity on government's radar unless we can help in that first three phases. And that's why a lot of our energy is in doing things to help our entrepreneurs be successful to the point where they actually go ahead and file for a license and start to hire people. And a lot of our work is in those first three phases. And some of the programs did not exist here before. If you've been to TEDx, it's pretty exciting. The last couple have been fantastic. Didn't exist here three years ago. Million Cups didn't exist. So some of these programs that are helping our entrepreneurs connect and be successful are programs that we initiated and are really starting to get some traction. So we're pretty excited by that. And Reno, our recognition this past year as the highest density of startups for mid-sized cities tells you there is entrepreneurial energy here. Those entrepreneurs need help, and so that's really what it's about. A little bit of the future of Reno piece, and this is the region as well, but we look at Reno in this case because the collective is downtown, and the collective is a place where you can just basically rent a desk. Out of the collective, in the last year, we've had dozens of companies that have graduated, if you will, and have gone out and taken office space in the region, in this case, in downtown and Startup Row. That will help us as a region attract more entrepreneurs in the long run. So really part of our entrepreneurial region, in this case, is downtown Reno, but many of those entrepreneurs could just as easily be downtown Sparks. We like to say the biggest little startup community, one of our messages when we go to the Bay Area, a place for entrepreneurs with a life. If we can get them to look at this region and see all the quality of life that's associated with this region, we have a better chance of attracting people and growing companies in the years ahead. Finally, we do look at product improvement. What are we doing to make what we're selling, and we're selling a community to these companies and to these entrepreneurs? How do we make it better? And a part of that is promoting a college town kind of atmosphere that helps research and development, that helps attract creative class. A lot of that is very, very important going forward, and it will help us retain our youth in the long run as well. And then the business and quality of life message that we've been aggressive to promote, expand your business, enjoy your life, that kind of message, and helping to move forward with the message that we are a business community. Visitor and gaming is a very important part of our economy, but most of our economy is driven by businesses. And so how do we tell people that? Through different messaging and helping them understand, as they come here as a visitor, if we can help them understand this may be a place for business as well, we can potentially attract businesses in the years ahead. Just the funding sources, we've had some lean years. We have started to get traction on the private investment support. We certainly appreciate local government funds. State funding, as you can see, is at a lower level and is declining each year, so your support is critical to helping us fund our overall program of work. We do like to talk about our ROI, 301, and anyone with a 401K like that is mighty rich, but in the region, I think we do help the economy grow. And finally, it's a public-private partnership, and you're an important part of that team, and I thank you for your support. One closing comment, and this is not that we know something or can say anything we don't, really can't say, but are we ready for Tesla?
Yes.
Well, we're ready, and we like it, but I'll tell you that with Tesla comes a whole lot of concerns, and I list them there. Tesla and their growth here will affect the city of Sparks more than any other community. So, you know, at some point, I think we would want to sit down and talk about what does that mean, and maybe at some point get out in front of it as much as possible, because it's not just 6,500 Tesla employees, it's another 6,000 to 10,000 employees, suppliers, providers, and secondary employers that would be affected. And that growth in the housing side also includes a growth on the business side. So we're seeing a pretty dramatic change in our economy, all good, all exciting, except it could be troublesome if we don't get out and plan for it and prepare for it. Does it require additional staff, for example, to meet the needs of the growing businesses? Does it require additional traffic modifications or upgrades? And because the city of Sparks is really the closest metro area to Tric, Tahoe-Reno Industrial Center, the impact here is going to be pretty dramatic. And so I just offer that as a thought as you go forward in your planning to start to say, if it comes, it's going to happen fast. But even if it doesn't come, in the last three years, the population of business out at Tahoe-Reno Industrial Center has gone from 2,500 to 5,000. We have five prospects now, not counting Tesla, that will take that number and move it from 5,000 to 10,000. So we're at a point where the growth out there is going to have a pretty significant impact with or without Tesla on this region, and certainly this community. So thanks to you and your support. I open it up to any questions you may have.
Thanks, Mike. I'd be happy to know when it comes to speed of government you were talking about. Right after the first of the year, we're all going on diets, so we're trying to slim down so we're quicker, yeah, much quicker. So appreciate that. Any questions? Mr. Schmidt?
You know, Mike, thanks for your report. You always do a good job. Edon is doing a great job. I can't thank you enough for all the businesses you brought into town. You mentioned a couple of things. One was the $10 million that the state has for redevelopment or new businesses. Have they actually spent any of that yet?
The catalyst fund is, in fact, up and running. We have, in this region, two or three companies that have applied for. One has received it already, and the other is still waiting to receive funds. So the funding is actually in place and is being processed. We have pretty much hit our percentage of that, which is about 20 to 30% of the $10 million. So we have a lean period unless something magically happens. Some of that obviously has been set aside and will be used for the Tesla project.
Are they replenishing that every two years?
Every two years.
Every two years?
Yes.
And then I lost my thought, but you made another statement about they want to know how the government works with these new businesses. And actually, Edon sent us a person that's very interested in developing downtown, and the first question out of his mouth was, is Sparks Council easy to work with? Because he's had some unpleasant dealings before. So I think we're good to go, and I, thank you.
I'll answer.
Everybody would add. You can add whatever everybody would add.
Some of them are.
Yeah. Thank you.
Mr. Lawson?
Yeah, Mike, I'm, sit on the board of Edon, and you guys are doing a fantastic job, and you keep outperforming yourselves each year, so that's pretty awesome. I think the one thing that I really have enjoyed, most of all, is the taxi toppers and changing that message on there. And I think that's made a huge difference for us, you know, from the, seeing the adult-oriented advertisement to more positive business-type advertisements, and just says a lot about our community, that you're behesting, you're urging to get the community to get behind that. And I believe that the taxi companies have bought into your program wholeheartedly, and to me, just the little things like that is what makes a big difference down the road. So thank you for that.
Thank you. It was very, a lot of support in that campaign, so thanks.
Very much.
Again, from me, Mike, thanks so much. It's been, I've been here since '99, and this is the best Edon's ever been, so I really appreciate what you guys have done, and keep going. You're setting the bar higher and higher every year, and you keep hitting the bar. So when you keep doing that, it's awesome. So thank you so much for what you guys have done for us.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and I will reiterate that as a team, economic development is a team sport, and I have worked in a few regions and communities, and no place have I worked where everyone is on board and willing to work together to do economic development. There may be other issues on the plate, but when it comes to economic development, we've never had a problem working with the different government entities here, and certainly Sparks has led the way, so thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Okay, next is presentation on 39 North Downtown, a newly formed organization of business owners for the improvement of downtown Sparks. Welcome. Please give us your name for the record, please.
Sizinski.
Okay.
Well, good afternoon, and thank you so much for inviting us to give a presentation about our group. My name is Kim Sizinski, and we are all here today to represent 39 North Downtown. We are small businesses or business owners and Sparks residents who want to do something about downtown. So briefly, I just want to do three things today. Who we are, why we started this group, and what we think we can do to make a difference in our community. And so first, I wanted to introduce the group. I'll start. My name is Kim Sizinski. I am a small business owner, have been in business for 19 years. I have five employees. I'm down on D Street. About 15 years ago, an old house was converted to a commercial building, and I, my husband and I bought it about nine years ago for my business. So I have been in this community for nine years, and I have just been itching to do something about downtown. The economy certainly didn't allow for a lot of that in the last couple of years, so haven't been able to do anything, but we really feel that this is the time. We need to do something about downtown. So that is, that's my story, and I just wanted to introduce everybody else.
Kim? You might want to tell us what your business is.
Oh, okay.
You're on TV, there's millions of people watching.
Okay. My company name is Spaces Design and Planning. I am a commercial interior designer, and we work all over the West Coast and do interior design. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is David Echus. I'm an architect here in Sparks. Been living here in Sparks for 32 years. Been in business for 10 years. Been, my business has been located here in Sparks for seven, and actually, I'm a stone's throw away from where Kim is on her office. I'm on 14th Street, 526 14th Street, across the street from Scoopers. I have to always tell myself that I have to limit myself to one time a month I can go over there and have something to eat. Anyway, I, we've been talking back and forth about getting together and trying to do something like this. I'd been thinking of it in the back of my mind for a long time, but I wasn't really sure which direction to go, and then Kim brought up the idea, and I said, "This is fantastic." So I'm just kind of getting my feet wet in this whole thing, but I think the opportunity for this area to really develop a core, or at least improve or help the core grow, is a great thing, and so anything I can do to help that, I'm here. So, anyway, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Hello, I'm Angela Swindells, and I'm the proud owner of Locatau Group. We have been in business for six years, and we have five employees and growing. I'm on East Greg, so I'm deep in the industrial, but I'm a fond enjoyer of the Sparks area, both for its outdoor activities in the desert, like the Wild West Motorsports, as well as all the Victorian area. I also have a nonprofit where we've been feeding the homeless down on 4th Street for five years. We do it every Friday night. So I just, I'm a huge fan of support, and I love our community, and I want to see it grow in any way, and I think that this is a great opportunity for us to really get involved and make businesses connect and work together and have fun family activities for the, for people to do in downtown Victorian.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Krista Burney, and I am the skincare girl. I'm an esthetician, and I've been in business in Sparks for three years. I'm on D Street, right across from Kim, and I, I love Sparks. Our square is very embracing, okay? We have the opportunity, we're really good at what we do, okay? 39 North Downtown, where Sparks connects, we have a lineage of connecting people already through our railroad history. My building is 537 square feet. We believe it was designed for one of the railroad workers, okay? So that's where that phrase, "where Sparks connects," comes from. We've been connecting people for a long time. We'd like to do that. We want to connect local businesses. We want to be a platform for growth and development so that we can create a vital community for all of Sparks, and that's where the idea came from. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor and Councilmen, members, lady. My name is Christopher Dare, and I'm a community leader, and I also run Excel Christian School and helped develop that. I got to know these guys a few weeks ago, actually, in a meeting. We were talking about what was going on, and the more we talked, the more I got excited because what they're trying to do is connect businesses on common ground and find a way to come alongside you guys and make this happen, and there's nothing more exciting than that. And so as I've gone to some meetings and different things, it is exciting to be a part of it, and I'm here just to help and be a part of, however we can, to help make Sparks what it can be. And I think it's the key, and I hope this message is out for anybody to hear, if you have a business here in Sparks, we can do this together. There's a lot of great things that can happen when we're together. Thank you.
Thank you. So we're going to talk about the why, why we decided to do this, and Krista kind of alluded to the fact that we were together one day, and we were talking about clients that we have in Midtown, and we were excited about their energy and everything that's happening here. My client has developers that are coming in and wants to develop their property, and we just stopped and said, "Wait a minute. Why are these developers not looking at downtown Sparks?" It's a little gem, and we need to make people aware of it. So that's what we did, is we, we thought about Midtown as a good example and taking some of the positive things that have happened. The main thing that we get from Midtown is it was grassroots, didn't come from government. It came from small businesses coming together and wanting to improve their neighborhood, and it happened in a very successful way. So we're trying to take some of that and grab onto some of their successes. One of the things that's been happening all summer, every Sunday, is Reno gets this newspaper and talks about all of the districts in Reno and what they're doing. They've gotten a lot of energy going on. The biggest little image problem is what the article was yesterday. I don't think we have an image problem. I think we have a good image, but it's just a very quiet image, and I think that we need to build from there, and we have a really good foundation. We have over 90,000 residents, as you know, and we, or I think that a lot of that money goes to Reno. I have to say, though, I'm really happy with the way Legends has come about because I know my retail dollar for clothes and things like that are now staying in Sparks, and I'd like to keep the Sparks residents' money here, if we possibly can. We have amazing foundation, and we want to get to developers and existing businesses that recognize how amazing this community can be, and it really is a diamond in the rough. So what is it that we can do? And so we've been talking a lot about a grassroots effort, is getting businesses to believe in this area and its potential. We have researched, interviewed, we tried to learn as much as possible about downtown. I know some of you have gotten my phone calls, so I'm sorry, but you're going to get more. But we started to learn about some of the successes and challenges from the TOD corridor. I think it's really important that we understand what those things are, so if we're promoting this area, that we have a full understanding of some of the things that might, they might be encountered, or it could be a real positive, so we can look at it both ways. We have a monthly meeting. We have a monthly meeting and what we're doing is meeting on the first Tuesdays of every month. September 2nd is our next meeting. We're meeting at Cantina, if anyone would like to join us. And what we want to gain from this meeting is ideas and vision about what they, what business owners and residents see in downtown Sparks. What does 39 North look like in one year, in two years, and in five years? What do we want to see? And I think when we get those ideas, we can, as a team, build strategies around, and strategies and solutions around these ideas, so that we can help partner with and build some of these things and make them happen. So, we know that other organizations have come forward and trying to do this. We know that it's going to be a long-term, a long-term event for us to do, not an event, but long-term for us. This is not, we're not going to meet for the next couple of months and go, "Okay, you know, we tried to do something." We know that it's going to take years to make a difference. And we're here, our businesses are here, and we're not going anywhere. Our mission is to strengthen the foundation of downtown Sparks by building connections, creating pride, and supporting the model growth for a vibrant community. So, thank you for allowing us to come today. I'd love to answer questions.
Thanks, Kim. I'm sure you've got some questions. Thank you from, from me. I think in the past, we've tried some things with, to bring the businesses together down there, maybe not enough. And we've never been able to because I don't think the idea came from the businesses. I like this because it's coming from you folks, are wanting to get together and then bring us to the table in the future and down the road and right now to see how we can help. So, I think we've started here with a good group. You've got a good idea, I believe. And I think, I don't see why the council would not support this. I support 100% you folks getting together. I'm just hoping you can draw some more of those businesses downtown in, which we have not been successful at, for whatever reason. Like I said, we've tried to draw them in before and have never been able to really get them all together on the same page. So, maybe something coming from you folks, rather than from the politicians, will get this whole thing started and, you know, and I appreciate you, you folks getting together and do this. We have some questions. Ron Smith.
You know, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've been talking to Kim for the last several months and you're right, she's a pest, she keeps calling me. But I love the excitement that this group has. It's the first time a group of business owners has approached the city and asked how they could help us.
Yep.
Which would indeed help all of us. Their meeting, I was at their, you've had one meeting.
Our meeting.
And then, I hope to go to the next one, too. But all I'll just say is, don't get in their way because they're going to run over the top of you if you don't want to help them. And they want people down there to come downtown, like we've always wanted, but haven't been very successful. And the best way to do that, you nailed it, Kim, is keep the politicians out of it. We'll walk alongside you.
Yep.
But you don't want us to lead you, believe me.
Right.
Thank you.
I think that's always been the problem, is that we try to force you folks into doing something and people look at a politician and say, "Now, what's, what's on the outside here? What's the key? What's the catch here? Why are they trying to draw us into this deal?" So, I'm glad. You guys do it, draw us into it. We'll do whatever we can to help you and like Ron said, march beside you and help however we can. So, Ron Schmidt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not going to repeat what Ron said, but I agree that you're on the right path. You've started a good foundation and a core. You know, keep running hard, you know, let us know what's going on, ask us what we need. Got great staff here that, you know, have been working with redevelopment for, well, I think on 40 years now, redevelopment downtown. So, keep up the good work and thank you very much. We appreciate what you're doing for the city.
Yeah, thanks for being here. We appreciate it and we'll look forward. First Tuesday of every month, 5:30 at a different location downtown, probably. I know I got an email today or yesterday, I think, so...
I don't support any business that's down there, that's supporting us.
Okay. And I think I got an email today or yesterday or whenever, that it's at Cantina on the 2nd at 5:30. So, we'll see you there.
We just wanted to mention one more thing that I forgot to mention. Krista, do you want to talk about the...
Come on up.
Sure. At our first meeting, we were fortunate enough to have Ron Smith and Julia Raddi attend. And one of the things they happened to mention was that there was some scuttlebutt about the city wanting to perhaps bring in to the city, an ice skating rink. And that they weren't sure how they could create that and how that might come to fruition. What, something that, that looks like for 39 North is that we would like a number and a date and how we can help create that for the city of Sparks. All we could picture was the 39 North logo, which we have the logo. And by the way, 39 North is the latitude of Sparks. That's where that comes from. The logo underneath it, just envision finally being able to have a winter event, the food trucks downtown, having hot food, hot chocolate, you know, maybe carol or singing, you know, our residents being able to ice skate, the city creating money from that revenue and benefiting the entire, I mean, you talk about Tesla and all the residents and what they'd be able to do, I mean, what that looks like. And, you know, calling it the 39 North Pole. You know, that's the kind of thing that we're envisioning for our community. That's what we'd like to create. So, you know, a number and a date is something we really like to push for, so we can create sponsorship to make that happen for our city.
Okay, thanks. Ron Smith.
Thank you. You know, and I know we talked about that and we're going to have some meetings on redevelopment in the next couple of weeks and so we can discuss that, find exactly where our finances are. That's always been the problem, is the finances and that's true with everything. And I forgot to mention, they offered to help, which, which is very important. First time we've had that. So, we'll keep you informed and, and let you know where we're going. Our, one of our main goals is to get people in the square during the winter months, whether it's in the evening or during the day. We're doing the Pumpkin Palooza and one other one, is it Ron, right? There's another one out there?
I think so.
Is it the Beer Fest? Is that, is that there, too?
Heritage Day.
Tracy might know. Or Francine?
There's Western Heritage Festival and the Brew Festival has canceled.
Okay. So, anyway, we're trying to get people there in those October, November, December months where it's cold. And I think we can do it if we work together. Thank you.
Thanks, folks. Appreciate it.
Good job, guys. Thank you.
You don't have to leave, it's going to get exciting.
Yeah, you can stay if you want.
It's a day school for the kids.
Okay, next is proclamation, International Week of Peace and Nonviolence. Who's here to accept this? Anybody? Come on down. I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. Whereas September 21st is the International Day of Peace as established by the United Nations General Assembly in 1981. And whereas peace is the goal of all moral people and societies of the world. And whereas the United States ranks 101st in the 2014 Global Peace Index. And whereas social ills arising from violence, poverty, and climate destruction undermine peace. And whereas the nationwide campaign nonviolence has invited all people of faith, conscience, and benevolence to speak publicly for an end to violence and war, poverty, and environmental destruction from September 21st through the 27th. And to resolve, create a culture of peace and nonviolence. Now therefore, I, Gino Martin, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim September 21st, 2000, September 21st through the 28th, 2014, as International Week of Peace and Nonviolence and encourage all residents to promote peace in all that they do. Thank you. Thank you.
Let me give you this, give us your name for the record and the safety words, please. Thanks.
I'll be brief. Thank you very much, Mayor Martin and all the members of the council. This is the third year that Sparks has issued this proclamation and we're very grateful. And I'm accepting this on behalf of many, many people in our communities, Reno Sparks area and Carson, Northern Nevada, who are working on issues of peace and nonviolence on an ongoing basis. And part of that now is to become more and more public with, with that focus. We think that everybody, deep in their heart, wants peace. But we don't, we don't stop to think that non, that violence is not inevitable, that, that we don't have to have as much violence in our lives as we do. And so, with the International Day of Peace, and especially this year with the focus on the campaign nonviolence, we're looking at some of the really big issues that contribute to the lack of peace. There are big issues of violence, such as poverty, war, and environmental destruction. And those are some of our biggies facing the whole, the whole world right now. But we also believe, as we have learned, there are many, many people out there doing a lot of work. And I think those in favor of, of nonviolence are far outnumber the others who believe in the violence. So, thank you again.
Thank you for being here today. You know, I know we, probably you're not going to be able to cure this entirely, but if we don't keep the conversation going and talking about peace and nonviolence, it'll never happen. So, appreciate the work that you and your group do. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And you asked me to state my name and I completely forgot. I'm Rita Sloan. I'm, I'm with a few groups, but there's a lot of people out there doing this work. So, I just happen to be the one available today.
Thanks, Rita. Okay, next is a presentation to acknowledge the Sparks Fire Department, 5th Annual Project Safe Golf Fundraiser and sponsors. Mr. King, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Usually, I'm up here to talk to you about boring code stuff and code adoptions and that. But today, I'm really excited to be here to recognize five local businesses that stepped up and went above and beyond to support our largest public fire safety education program, Project Safe, which is a residential smoke alarm program. In your packet, I've, I've written your report and added a couple of items. But for the viewers, I'd like to go over just a couple, a couple of facts that we have on this. And Project Safe Residential Smoke Alarm Program has expanded to be one of the, if not the largest and most successful residential smoke alarm programs in Nevada. Believe me, I've searched around and, and we definitely have the market there. We're doing a good job. Started back in 2008 as just a community fire safety education program and transformed into a multifaceted fire safety education and installation program. With the assistance of local businesses, their volunteers, Sparks Fire Department has installed over 2,700 smoke alarms, 574 carbon monoxide detectors, 53 hearing impaired detectors, in 939 Sparks homes. And we've educated over 2,236 adults and children through this program. One of the big highlights really for me that shows how successful this is, is that we, even though we don't want to see this, we've had two documented saves from our program. I think you've heard of one before and we've had two. Two incidences where they had a fire in the home, the smoke alarms that we installed alerted the occupants, got them out safely, they called 911, limited damage, everyone's safe. So, I mean, that's a success for us. That, that shows us that it works. Our goal for, goal for 2014 is to reach 1,000 homes and we're on track to do that. So, that's, that's what I'm hoping to come back maybe in, towards middle of December and let you know that we did reach that goal. From 2010 to 2012, we had three FEMA grants that helped us support the funding of this program. And then to help maintain the funding of this program through, after that, we've also had five, organized five golf tournament fundraisers. And believe it or not, their golf tournament fundraisers bring in a lot of money. This year's golf fundraiser was the most successful of all. We raised a net profit of $18,400 from this program. It was $5,700 increase from last year. Every year, it's gone up. We had 144 players come out to support our program. And, you know, at about $120 around, they're there for a reason. They're there to support the program. And I had a lot of people tell me that they are, they're to play golf, but they're there to support that program as well. And it just gave me chills every time someone said that. The proceeds from the golf fundraiser are used to maintain our Project Safe program, to continue purchasing smoke alarms, carbon monoxide detectors, hearing impaired devices, public fire safety education paraphernalia, and then to support any other public fire safety education programs we have in the city. But, the main reason I'm here today is to publicly recognize five local businesses that were our top title sponsors, the ones that put out the most in this. Even though we appreciate every sponsor, every donation for, that we get, these were the top five sponsors that we had for our tournament. And the golf fundraiser could not be as successful as it was without the generous donations and sponsorships that we get from them, and especially the, the top five. So, today I have plaques that were made up for the top five sponsors and I would love to be able to have the mayor come down and present them, the plaque, and take a picture with them. I'll call them down one by one. If that sounds good, or any questions? Okay. All right, the, the first business is ABC Fire and Extinguisher Services. They've been a sponsor since 2010. Nick Brown's here to give the presentation.
Like Ed just said, it's Mayor Dress Up Day. I apologize for my dress, but we're having a bucket deal this afternoon. I didn't want to dress up.
Thanks.
And I apologize.
Okay, forget this camera. I know how to use this camera. There we go. Take a better picture anyways. Perfect. The second business is Bellford Property Restoration, has been a sponsor since 2012. It'll be Chris Nelson and Michelle Turner.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, everyone smile. Perfect. Thanks, Jim. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
The third business is Sims Metal Management, been a sponsor since 2013. Matt, Mr. Matt Hall.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
All right, and Sierra Chemical Company. This year, they came aboard to do sponsorship for us, Mr. Ron Esplin. And then our fifth is Coit Services of Reno, came on this year to sponsor.
Mr. Smith?
Bob, I know you do this every year and it's, it's a great project. Is this just for Sparks residents?
The golf tournament is so...
No, 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 the, the...
Oh, the Project Safe?
The Project Safe.
Yes, sir.
And then, just to be clear, and I know you, you danced around a little bit, if I was to call you up and need a, a fire, a smoke alarm, what would it cost me?
Zero.
Okay, so, zero care.
Yes, sir.
Okay, you're covered in all your, the, the things you do.
Yes.
Thanks for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Yeah, good project. I think it's one of few in the United States, correct, that do this?
Yes, there's, there's a few different smoke alarm programs out there. They're called, you know, many different things. But this one has expanded to be quite, quite big. And we're going to keep it going until we feel that, that we've reached as many homes as possible to make sure they all have proper smoke detection and carbon monoxide detectors.
Great. Thanks, Bob. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, next is consent items. Anybody want to pull a consent item? If not, looking for motion? Mr. Raddi?
Consent items 8.1 through 8.8.
Mr. Schmidt?
Okay.
Moved by Councilwoman Raddi, seconded by Councilman Schmidt, to approve consent items 8-1 through 8-8. Any further discussion? 3263, a resolution authorizing the transfer of City of Sparks 2014 state volume bond capacity of $4,850,913.14 to the Nevada Department of Business and Industry. Mr. George Graham, go ahead, George.
Good afternoon. I'm full record George Graham, housing specialist.
Good afternoon, City Council Mayor, a distinguished guest. Annually, the state bond cap, there's an annual allocation that the City of Sparks, as well as other cities in the state of Nevada, receive. And we've received the $4.8 million in bond cap. And for the last couple years, we've transferred it to the Nevada Housing Division. We used to split between Nevada Housing, Rural Housing Authority, but they work collaboratively on a lot of things. And they consented that we should send a whole allocation to the Nevada Housing Division. And it's all, and it's been working great. We've been able to assist a lot of first-time home buyers in the Sparks community over the past year. Between the two agencies, 54 homeowners and more than $9 million in mortgage assistance down payment program, grants, assistance, other mortgage products was extended to homeowners in the community. So, the Sparks community has been benefiting great through this program, and I'm just bringing this before you for consideration. And if there's any questions or anything, that concludes what I really want to present at this time. If there's any questions.
Okay, questions for George? Mr. Ratty?
I move to approve the adoption of Resolution Number 3263 to offer the transfer of the city's 2014 tax exempt bond bond capacity to the Nevada Department of Business and Industry to be allocated to the Nevada Housing Division for the purpose of supplementing their first-time home buyer program.
Mr. Schmidt, second. Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Schmidt to approve 9.1, Resolution Number 3263. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thanks, George.
Thank you all.
9.2, review and possible approval of an agreement regarding State Question 1 funding for design and construction of the Rock Park restroom project. Tracy Dominguez, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. Tracy Dominguez, Parks and Recreation Director. I'm before you today to seek approval in the acceptance of a great funding opportunity through the State Question 1 for the design and construction of the Rock Park restroom project. As you know, in 2009, we revamped the park and did the addition of the Whitewater Park. And at that time, the old park restrooms were badly deteriorated, and as the design of the new park moved along, budgetary restrictions eliminated any restroom replacement. So, since '09, we have been operating the park with portable restrooms. With the State 1 funding, State Question 1 funding, we will be able to put back a permanent restroom in this park, more centrally located. And the beauty of it is that the project meets SQ1 guidelines, and with the 50% match requirement, they have already pre-approved our match as the Rock Park Phase 2 construction project that we did in '09. So, the match has already been met. So, with that, I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Free money.
I know. It is a hard one to say no. It'll dramatically, it'll improve the health of our park, the experience of our visitors and residents at this facility, and eliminate our need for portable restrooms at a cost of about $12,000 a year.
Perfect. Great. Questions for Tracy? Okay, looking for a motion, Julia.
I move to approve the agreement regarding November 2002 State Question 1 Parks and Open Space Bond Funds between Marshall County and the City of Sparks for the amount of $530,438 to construct the Rock Park restroom project as outlined by staff. Hallelujah.
Mr. Lawson?
And a second, hallelujah.
Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Lawson to approve 9.2. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Unanimously, thank you, Tracy.
Thank you very much.
Okay, 9.3 is review of the Nevada League of Cities and Municipalities 215, 2015 bill draft requests and discussion of possible action on a selection of a topic for the City of Sparks bill draft request. Mr. Mayberry?
Can anybody hear me okay?
Can you hear me now?
I have a lot of electronic devices in me now these days, so it's a little more feedback.
You have ears on.
So, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, council members. Mr. Triskel, Mr. Adams, I'm Adam Mayberry, Community Relations Manager. So, the purpose of this BDR is, or it's just an agenda item, rather, to discuss a couple of things. The July 14 City Council meeting, you'd ask staff to come by, come back and just review what the Nevada League of Cities has adopted for their five BDRs. And so, I'll outline those fairly quickly, and then we'll talk a little bit about the city's opportunity to submit its sole BDR. The, I think you'll find that, and I certainly don't want to speak for the league, the mayor serves as our elected representative on the league board, as you know, he also serves on the executive board as a treasurer. So, I don't want to speak for them, but I think it's probably, at least from my observations, they have tried to identify possible legislation that has a fairly good chance of, better than 50% chance of surviving. Also, legislation that touches all cities and municipalities, some more than others. But, so again, we'll go through these topics fairly quickly. There's been no legislation, no language has been applied to these. Again, remember, these are just bill draft requests or topics. Legislation, language is still several weeks away. So, the first one is merely to expand the use of residential construction taxes to include for the refurbishment and capital improvements of existing parks, as opposed to just building new parks. Second one is a little wordy. The Main Street USA program is a subsidiary of the National Trust for Historic Persevation. It's a federal program that allows for improvements in areas identified for preservation, provides for grants for a variety of purposes, such as beautification, historic, or visitor tourism related purposes. In order to be eligible for grant opportunities, you must follow the Main Street USA program guidelines. And one of those guidelines is that the state must have a state coordinator that would manage the program. So, this BDR would provide funding for that state coordinator. Go ahead, the Governor's Office on Economic Development is interested in this program. They may bring forward their own BDR, in which case the league has an alternative. Gardinerville is an example that follows the guidelines for the Main Street USA program, but they're not eligible for grants because the state doesn't have a state coordinator. So, something that Sparks can certainly talk about in the future, should this become law. The third, BDR, is changes to a new public records law that was adopted the last session, somewhat convoluted, but there are lots of different parts to this. But what the league is trying to do is provide some clarity on, quote, "extraordinary use of staff time" when responding to public records requests. Currently, as I understand it, if you provide electronic copy of public record requests, the requestor does not have to pay for staff time in that preparation, whereas if you provide a hard copy, the requestor can be charged per page and for staff time required. We get a lot of public records requests, particularly from our, Reno Gazette Journal is an example, public records requests that provide, that require a lot of time from our staff. And so, this provides some clarity for that. Again, we're not, we're not saying we don't want to provide public information, just trying to, you know, oftentimes, these requests are at a cost to the taxpayers. The number four is changing the final authority for issuance of business license for the sale of wholesale liquor. What they're trying to do here is if, basically eliminate one step, if you want to, if you're an applicant and you want to get a wholesale liquor license, and you want to do that in a municipality, you have to go through a county commission first. This would alleviate that step. The counties, I understand, are on board. And it's most, more of an issue for Southern Nevada in this particular case. So, again, so we're approving liquor license as well as other types of businesses, wineries, breweries, cutting down about 60 days or so. So, that's the thrust of that item. The fifth one is really simple. It allows for that tentative budget hearing that we all have to have on the third Tuesday in May. It allows for that tentative budget hearing to be on a regular city council meeting. So, it's just rather a cleanup item, sure the clerk would appreciate that. So, those are the five. There's an alternative, right to know what's being transported. Some cities feel they're lacking information on the kinds of items that are being transported via rail or highway through their cities. Again, not sure how this would be really implemented, but in an alternative, should the governor's office adopt that item on the Main Street USA program. So, again, fairly quickly, Mr. Mayor, anything you want to cover on that?
No, really, there was not. There's other issues that are coming down the pipe, like home rule. We're looking for a legislator to help with that. I think Mr. Gokcakia was going to look at doing that. We're looking at depreciation. Realtors are looking to push forward towards that, getting the Southern contingent on board, they think they do. So, it looks like that could go somewhere with a legislator doing something on depreciation. So, that's why we didn't take up those particular areas. Also, the county, NACO, is looking at those items also. So, they will be in the process somewhere, just not with Nevada League of Cities. Because those have been very important to us, is home rule and depreciation. So, those will be taken up by someone.
Okay. Thank you. And so, then on the topic of the city's bill draft requests, as you know, we do, again, opportunity to submit one BDR. There have not been any topics that have been brought up internally or by the council. It's still staff's recommendation to, as of now, to move forward, not using our BDR. Deadline is a week from tomorrow. If you recall, we talked a little bit about the Charter Committee BDR on July 14, and Senator Debbie Smith did agree to sponsor the Charter Committee's bill draft request. So, the chair of the Charter Committee met with Senator Smith, myself, and Cheryl Leiting a few weeks ago. I do want to also just let this body remind the council that, you know, there's still always a second opportunity for another bite of the apple, you know, should something significant come up. We could always reach out to a legislator to see if they wanted to sponsor something on our behalf. Example would be the room tax bill, Senate Bill 509, the Senator Smith put her name on it, was the bill that we discovered late. In fact, we discovered in the early part of the 2013 session that the room tax had actually expired, and we had to craft legislation to have that room tax that's dedicated to Victorian Square to continue. Very successful process through Senator Debbie Smith. So, I wanted to just make sure the council was mindful of that.
Yeah, if there's a chance that anybody wants to build a casino, we can always take care of that, too, so.
Right up to the last minute.
Right up to the last minute. It's always time to do stuff up to the last minute, so. Any other questions for Adam or discussion? Okay, do you need approval on this, Adam, or is this just for, the part about the League of Cities is just for information, correct?
Well, correct. If there is no desire to bring forth a city BDR, I think we could probably take no action. It would be appropriate.
Yeah, exactly. Okay. Thanks, Adam.
Appreciate it.
Okay, 9.4 is a first reading.
Bill Number 2683, An Ordnance Amending Chapter 9 of the Sparks Municipal Code, revising provisions related, relating to convicted persons, sex offenders, and persons convicted of nonsexual crimes against children, repelling provisions of the Sparks Municipal Code pertaining to the registration of those persons, and thereby making state laws solely applicable to such registrations, and providing other matters properly relating thereto.
This is the first reading of Bill Number 2683. The public hearing and second reading of this bill will be conducted at the regular city council meeting on Monday, September 8, 2014. 9.5 is a first reading.
Bill Number 2684, An Ordnance Amending Chapter 13 of the Sparks Municipal Code, modifying environmental control and pretreatment standards and defining post-construction stormwater quality management, and providing other matters properly related thereto.
This is the first bill, this is the first reading of Bill Number 2684. The public hearing and second reading of this bill will be conducted at the regular city council meeting on Monday, September 8, 2014. Public hearing items, 10.1, hearing, public hearing, consideration and possible approval of a request from Northern Nevada Community Housing Resource Board of the City of Sparks for the abandonment of a portion of D Street right-of-way and the right-of-way associated with two alleys adjacent to 2555 D Street. Mr. Martini?
I apologize. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. John Martini, city engineer, here today with a request for a right-of-way abandonment in the area of 255. It's actually surrounding 255 D Street. The request for the abandonment does come from Northern Nevada Community Housing Board. They're making substantial improvements to the existing structures, and they had a need to obtain more land.
John, you said 255? Is it 255 or 2555? I have 255.
Oh, I'm sorry, 2555. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Staff has researched the request. On the site plan that I gave you, this, these properties were created in 1904. This is the East Reno Heights map. You will notice that D Street, I'm sorry that it's fuzzy, D Street to the north, the PDFs are included in your staff report, D Street to the north, this is Interstate 80. This is the McCarron Autobody sign, the big electronic sign. The request for the abandonment is the frontage of the D Street right-of-way, which is in blue at the top. This little piece of 10-foot-wide alley was included in that 1904 map. It actually, we found it as we researched this, it's actually under the building right now. This portion back here was an east-west alley that existed on that old map. The parcels that I noted in yellow were actually lots that were disturbed when Interstate 80 was built. They were purchased by Nevada Department of Transportation in 1971. They were quick claimed back to the city for the purposes of an alley, hence the title of this request, two alleys and one D Street abandonment. Staff has researched and reviewed the legal descriptions that go along with this order to vacate right-of-way. Public notice was given in the newspaper. This does serve as the public hearing. It is the council's pleasure to instruct the order of vacation to be recorded, should you choose to abandon this right-of-way. Staff recommends approval, and I'm available for any questions if you have them.
Questions for John? Okay, this is a public hearing item. I'll open it up to public. Anyone want to speak in particular to this item? Yes, ma'am. Come on down. And if you would just give your name for the record, and when you're done speaking, if you could fill out one of our little cards that the...
I actually have one.
You have one? Okay, good. Go ahead, just give us your name for the record, and go right ahead. You have three minutes.
My name is Jenna Mummy. I'm actually the property manager of this property. It was an old rundown property that our company had purchased with city funds and renovated very, very beautifully, might I add. And this abandonment greatly helps access to car parking. We also have maintained it greatly since what it has been maintained before. And we, with this abandonment, we hope to reconstruct the fence to keep from vagrants passing through, because it is close to that freeway. So, we are having that issue, and this helps us make it more secure and a better property for low-income.
Thank you for coming today. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else? If you want to give your speaking card to the clerk, please, Jenna? Okay, anyone else? Okay, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for action, questions? Okay, looking for a motion, Julia?
Well, I'm thrilled to see this move forward.
And I am. This is actually a property that I've spent a little bit of time on recently because this is the property that is right below the billboard that we've been discussing in the billboard or in the sign ordinance. And I'm really glad that you mentioned the issue about fencing and the pathway there for transit for folks who are maybe going from one place to another, but it's not the best situation because witness that and the volume of that when we've been spending some time there. So that's great news. Love seeing this kind of work done. So I will make the motion. I move to approve the abandonment of a portion of D Street right-of-way and the right-of-way associated with two alleys legally described by six parcels adjacent to 2555 D Street as outlined by staff.
Mr. Smith?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Ratty, seconded by Mr. Smith. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, next is 10.2, public hearing, consideration and possible approval of a request from Wolfhound Holdings LLC to the City of Sparks for the abandonment of a portion of the 12th Street right-of-way and the abandonment of a portion of the Victorian Plaza Circle right-of-way. Mr. Martini, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Again, John Martini, city engineer. Before you, today, I have another request for a right-of-way abandonment. This one is from Wolfhound Holdings LLC, the owners of the Sparks Nugget. There are two parcels we'll be looking at today for purposes of vacating. The first is a piece of 12th Street, which most of us have known as a parking lot between the courtyard, which is, pardon me, the courtyard here to the west. This is Victorian Avenue to the north, of course Interstate, what? I lost it. Interstate 80 and the Nugget Casino. This piece that you can see here that actually runs under the freeway is remnant of 12th Street that was granted to us in 1904. Again, different track map. You know, over the years, as things have changed, this has become a dead end. It sits as a parking lot. Wolfhound has asked for it to be abandoned from right-of-way to their private property. The second request, I think Mr. Smithson, Lee Smithson with Tri-State Surveying is behind me in the crowd today. He prepared the ALTA survey for the Nugget transaction, and as part of that survey, 0.46 square feet of the Southeast Tower actually is encroaching in the Victorian Circle Plaza right-of-way. They've asked for that to be abandoned to them so that the title can be cleared up for both of us. Staff has researched the legal descriptions for both of these right-of-way abandements. We agree with them. Public notice has been given. This meeting serves as a public hearing for the council to consider this abandonment request. Staff recommends approval. I'm here for questions. Members of Wolfhound Holdings, their representatives are here as well.
Okay, questions? You mean they just couldn't move this little building a little bit?
Well, we could have told them to get out of our right-of-way.
Questions for Mr. Martini? Mr. Lawson?
John, in this abandonment, who owns the property at this time?
I'm sorry, Councilman Lawson, which, 12th Street?
On the D Street. Or no, whatever the alley is, yeah.
12th Street? Currently, that is a city street.
Pardon me?
It's currently a city street. It was dedicated to us in 1904.
I figured that part.
As a street.
It doesn't go far, but who owns that piece of property there?
We do.
So if we abandon it, we're giving over ownership to Wolfhound?
Correct.
Did we ask to trade some land in somewhere in that checkerboard out there in the plaza?
Mr. City Attorney, if I believe as my interpretation of state law does not allow for that with the request for abandonment.
Oh, is that something you want?
Do? Well, I mean, we're giving up some property there. We got a checkerboard going out in the plaza. It would be nice to have some more continuous property in the plaza for development later on. Just a thought.
If that's something you want me to look into, I'll be happy to do that.
I'm definitely in favor of it. I don't see any reason to give away. In business, if I give you something, you give me something. We have a mutual agreement there. It's not all give, give, give. So I'd like to see that checkerboard out in the square come a little closer together.
Okay, Mr. Schmidt?
For all of the Wolfhound Holdings, do we have any other easement issues out there?
Excuse me?
They had a chance to go through and look at all the other properties, as Mr. Lawson is saying, to see if there are any other easement issues on out there.
To my knowledge, none.
So this would be the last chance to talk about easement issues.
On this piece we'll abandon?
Any other property issues?
Well, I guess I'm a little confused, Councilman Schmidt, that I'm only considering two parcels here today.
Right. But I'm trying to follow up with Mr. Lawson's question because it has not been uncommon for us to swap properties with owners of property in Victorian Square. If we have to do something, Avenue O's comes in mind. We had all kinds of swapping. We did back and forth in property. We even paid for some right-of-ways for that.
Correct. Councilman Schmidt, I believe this problem is distinguished a little differently than other property transaction matters that this council has considered in the past. This property that we're considering here, the 12th Street abandonment, was dedicated to us via a subdivision track map. I think the council's experience in the past is with properties owned potentially in the redevelopment agency where we are the property owner by deed or by title. In this case, this was dedicated for public infrastructure. I think there is a distinction there, and my reading of state law makes it fairly clear on how properties that were dedicated to the city for public purposes can be vacated or abandoned.
Could be any change of use with this once we abandon it or it's going to stay as a parking area?
I believe Representative from Wolfhound is here today and could answer that question better than I can.
John, in the past, we've done other, we've done this before, have we not, in the past?
Abandements?
Abandements similar to this?
Yes, we...
With property that was dedicated to the city, you said?
Dedicated, yes, for public purposes.
Which we just did in number 10.1.
Yeah, the item before you was a similar situation, an old subdivision map where things had changed over time.
Okay, fairness and equality. Have we ever asked for a trade of other land for these abandements?
In my experience, no.
Okay. Just trying to get to a fairness issue here. Not that I don't think we shouldn't get something, but, you know, if we've set a precedent by not doing it in the past, I don't know if it's the right thing to do.
Honestly, Mr. Mayor, I don't ever remember the question being raised as a potential.
Okay.
And again, I'm your city engineer.
Yep.
I'm not your lawyer.
No, I understand. Okay, any other questions? Before I open it... Go ahead, Ron.
Just one, John. Didn't we dedicate some land also when they did the roundabout behind the Nugget, coming off the freeway?
I believe we did. I would have to research how much and what exactly it was.
And we didn't make a trade then?
To my knowledge, no.
Okay.
Okay, questions are, I'll open it to the public. Okay, public hearing, anyone want to speak to this particular item? Come on down, sir.
Welcome. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Craigie Timm. I'm a lawyer with Lionel, Sawyer, and Collins. We represent Wolfhound Holdings. Just, I think the only question remaining was what the plans are with the little piece of 12th Street, and the answer is they're new owners. They don't know exactly what they're going to do. They don't have any specific plans at this point. They want to make the property better. It's possible that they could, I mean, I don't know that, well, there's the picture of it. You know, the only thing that seems like you could possibly do is pop out the side of a building there, but I don't know if they have any interest in that at all at this time. But right now, it just looked funny on a survey. It turns out, by the way, I own part of the freeway, too, or my client does. So we've got to work with NDOT on that. There were a couple of little things that just didn't make sense when we looked at the survey. So we've got a few things to clean up, and frankly, we may have, I don't think we have anything else specific with City of Sparks, but we've got some cleanup work to do, and that's what we're trying to do so that we have a clean title to this property.
Okay, questions? Ms. Ratty?
My question is urgency. Would a two-week delay affect the project?
No. I don't think so. It would affect.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else have a public comment? Okay, let's close the public front comment, bring it back to council. Mr. Lawson?
Well, I'd like the attorney to research it for us and let us know if John's correct, and we'll beat it over and move down the road. But I'd certainly like to make the square a little easier to develop, and with the way it's set up right now, it's almost undevelopable in certain areas because of all the different property owners. So for me, I'd just assume, continue it and bring it back, and how much time that the city attorney thinks is fair, two weeks, four weeks, and let's figure it out.
John, you want a continuance, table it? What's best, what's cleanest for you?
Yeah, I'd like to look into the different options. I know we're talking about an abandonment proceeding right now. Maybe we could change the character of the proceedings from abandonment to a land swap. I don't know if we can do that legally or not, so I'd like to look into that, and that might take us a while.
So you want a continuance?
Why don't we do a continuance for two weeks, and then if we need to re-agendize the matter, we can do it that way.
Good. Mr. Schmidt?
Yes, my concern with holding on off on it is that, let's say that in two weeks we find out we can go and do a swap, we're going to enter into a process of appraisals, two, three appraisals, negotiations on price on two different lots, or surveys of where we're going to exchange that land and everything else like that, and we could be a couple of years down the road before we could actually do that. I think the present property owners have proved to be good stewards of the property. I don't think we've had any issues halfway through all the permitting process and the construction process, and, you know, they're sitting on some committees on the city, and I see a whole different attitude on things. And while I agree that getting some land in exchange for it's probably going to be a good deal, I think I'd much rather go and take, get this done in an effort of good faith, get it over with, and then sit down and talk to the owners. What can we do as redevelopment agency of buying all the properties or doing, you know, collective swapping back and forth and make larger lots on out there for everybody and enter that as a separate subject? You know, right now, this is just a liability for the city to own a piece of property in which people are parking on it. We have very little control over, I see tonight, of getting rid of that liability and being able to move forward with something. Something like this, now I've got a real heartburn with that three-quarters of square foot over there because that's worth a whole lot of money, you know? I mean, there's a multimillion-dollar building set on that, and nothing could be done with it. No, that's worth some money, but again, in light of good, we've known about that three-quarters square foot or half a square foot for a long time. I think we just need to get this over with and move on and continue working in good faith with the new owners over there.
Okay, other questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion, see where it goes. Mr. Lawson, Mr. Schmidt? Mr. Lawson?
I'm going to make a motion that we continue this for two weeks.
To the meeting of September 8?
Yeah, whenever our next meeting is.
September 8. Ms. Ratty?
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Lawson, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty to put this off till September 8, 10.2. Any further discussion, Mr. Smith?
Well, I agree with Mr. Smith that we should move forward with this, but since the council member's asking for continuance, I will vote for it.
Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thanks, John. Appreciate it. Okay, 10.3, I think, is next. Second reading, discussion of possible adoption of Bill number 2679, an ordinance amending Chapter 5 of the Sparks Municipal Code to provide for the licensing of medical marijuana establishments and other matters properly related thereto. Mr. Ornellis?
Mayor Martini, members of the city council, I'm Armando Ornellis, your city planner. Just a little bit of background on this item. The city council has previously approved zoning ordinances for all four types of medical marijuana establishments, dispensaries, cultivation, processing, and lab facilities. At its previous meeting, or at your previous meeting, the city council accepted a business impact statement which addressed this particular version of the ordinance. On the state side, the state of Nevada's application period has opened and closed in terms of acceptance of applications for MMEs that closed on the 18th of August, and at least the preliminary indications are that they may announce their rankings by the first part of November. The prospective MME applicant would only be able to apply for a city business license after they have been provisionally approved by the state. They also would have to have their land use entitlement in the form of the administrative review from the City of Sparks before they could actually submit for a business license application, so we would not expect any business license applications to be submitted immediately. And then just an update, through last week, city staff had completed 12 administrative reviews, five for dispensaries. Obviously, there won't be five dispensaries, you know, there's two allocated to the City of Sparks, three for cultivation-only facilities, and four for combination cultivation and production facilities. In terms of the proposed business license code changes, it specifies that, the ordinance specifies that all MMEs operating in Sparks would have to be licensed under this particular section. Only individuals and not business entities may be licensed. There is an exemption for persons who qualify for a compassionate exception for self-cultivation. They would be required to register with the city, but it would not be subject to the proposed fees. The MME business license or a MME business license may be revoked by the city council, so you can initiate that action on your part on the city council, and it would expire if the individual holding the state registration certificate loses their certification. There are some specific duties and responsibilities, I guess delegated to the chief of police. The chief of police is responsible for doing inspections of MMEs. They are to verify that employees of MMEs and their agents have the appropriate state-issued documentation. The police chief has a set of, or it's a document that we refer to as the safety plan and operational requirements, and really, that goes into a lot of the detail from the security perspective, from the law enforcement perspective that we would be looking for in terms of MME compliance. And then they can, the police chief can recommend license revocation to the city council when they, as part of these duties, for example, when they do their inspections, come across something that warrants revocation. Other city officials and officers, for example, the fire marshal, for example, may also inspect MMEs. In terms of the proposed fee structure, we're proposing for everything but the laboratories a base fee, which is an annual fee, and then a quarterly fee on gross receipts. For cultivation facilities and for facilities that produce edible and infused products, that proposed base fee is $3,000. For dispensaries, it would be $5,000. On the quarterly fee on the gross receipts, in addition, and this, again, this is in addition to the base fees, and this is for gross receipts in excess of $10,000, and it would be based, it would be done quarterly based on the previous quarter's revenues, which they would have to report to our licensing division. It would be $1 for each $1,000 in gross receipts for cultivation or the production of edible and infused products, and that would be $5 for each thousand for the dispensaries. For independent testing laboratories, we're proposing to, their fees be the same as essentially for any other non-privileged licensed Sparks business. So that concludes my presentation. Other than, I will note that there is a table in your, that was in the business impact statement that was also attached to this item that, you know, shows what the fees would be based on different levels of revenue. There's also a table in there that reflected, and Mr. Thompson covered this with you last meeting... meeting, what the fees are proposed or adopted for other Nevada cities. You know, it's a new industry. It's obviously difficult for us to predict what both these MMEs will be doing in terms of gross revenues, as well as what our costs for providing services are. I will note that, you know, these are fees that you could revisit at some point down the line. So again, that concludes my presentation. We don't take any questions.
Questions for Armando. Mr. Schmidt?
Armando, just to be clear on this, we are not authorizing or issuing any licenses today, are we?
No. Again, we wouldn't be able to issue any licenses under the terms of this until after an MME has a provisional state approval.
Right.
As well as, they would also have to have their land use entitlement, which some do, but again, you need both.
So we won't be issuing any licenses today until the state has their ranking and gives us their recommendations?
Correct.
Thank you.
Questions? Okay, this is a public hearing item, so I'll open it to the public. Anyone in the public want to speak to this particular agenda item? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public here and bring it back to council for action. Questions? Motions? Mr. Schmidt?
I move to approve Bill Number 2679 to amend Chapter 5 of the Sparks Municipal Code to provide for the licensing of medical marijuana establishments.
Mr. Lawson?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Lawson to approve Agenda Item 10.3, Bill Number 2679. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes 4 to 1. Mr. Kerrigan is a nay, okay? Thanks, Armando.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to 10.4, public hearing, consideration and possible approval of Resolution Number 3262, a resolution authorizing the Financial Services Department to establish an interfund loan to the general fund from the motor vehicle maintenance fund of the city of Sparks as necessary for general fund cash flow purposes. Welcome. Go ahead.
Hi, good afternoon. Debbie Kinder, for the record, accounting manager from the finance department, and I am here speaking public hearings so that the public will know of a possible interfund loan that you would approve. I will have to come every year for this. It's very, very similar to the one I presented two weeks ago for the grants, in that if any fund goes negative, the NRS has deemed that to be, an interfund loan has been made from another fund to cover that cash, and if we make an interfund loan, then we have violated NRS if we don't have a public hearing first. This is very different from last time, in that the general fund goes negative 2% of the time. Generally, getting advances of property taxes or scheduling your vendor payments is enough, but sometimes the timing is just wrong with 80% payroll you have to pay, that we do go negative, very rare, but we do go negative. And so by approving this resolution, you would be preventing violations of NRS. That concludes my presentation.
Debbie, quick question. We're not financially in trouble, are we, the city of Sparks?
I don't believe so, no.
This is just a normal course of business kind of deal, cash flow type?
There's cash flow issues because we receive most of our revenues in an untimely manner, and all of our expenses are very structured, that there are cash flow issues throughout the year, generally in August and December.
So our revenues don't exactly match up to when our expenses are?
Exactly.
And we need sometimes to advance money to make sure we're not in the negative?
Exactly.
Okay. Questions? Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Ms. Barrett. How often are we taking advanced property tax?
We take it twice a year, generally. August, since I started 15 years ago, we generally take it every August. We've just started taking them in December as well.
Okay, so we get four property tax payments a year, plus now we're taking two advanced payments a year on that money?
Yes, you can only request, you can only get 75% of what they've collected, so it's better to wait right up until the end. So they're fairly close.
And the reason why we're taking more, or having more of these situations is because we've allowed the general, the ending fund balance to continue to fall from a high of 12% down to 6% now.
Most assuredly is.
So the more we attack the ending fund balance...
The less of a problem we have.
You know, I show on here that we had a, an overdraw or a negative cash balance of $2 million at one time?
I don't, I didn't bring the detail.
It says the amount of interfund loans ranging from $23,000 to $2 million.
From 2010 to 2014, and I'm not sure when that $2 million was. But yes, sometime in the last four years.
That's scary to be $2 million overdrawn on a checking account.
Yes.
Thank you.
Questions? Anyone else? Okay, this is a public hearing item, so I'll open it to the public. Anyone want to speak to this particular agenda item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council for questions and action. Questions? Looking for a motion. Ms. Ratty?
I move to approve Resolution Number 3262, authorizing the Financial Services Department to establish an interfund loan to the general fund from the motor vehicle maintenance fund as necessary for general fund cash flow purposes.
Mr. Lawson?
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Ratty, seconded by Mr. Lawson, to approve 10.4, Resolution Number 3262. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passage unanimously.
Thank you.
Moving on to planning and zoning, public hearing. 11.1, second reading, discussion of possible adoption of Bill Number 2680, an ordinance amending Chapter 7.16, nuisances, including the addition of a property preservation section, and the Chapter 20.35 recreational vehicle storage of the Sparks Municipal Code and other matters properly related thereto. Thanks, gentlemen. Go ahead.
Mayor Martine, members of City Council. I'm Armando Ornellis, city planner.
Jill Rodriguez, senior code enforcement officer.
So just in terms of your time this evening, I would be glad to go through a fairly detailed presentation in terms of the changes. I could instead focus on simply some of the changes we made to the proposed ordinance based on the input you gave us at the last council workshop on this topic. It's whatever is your pleasure.
You want to just go over the quick changes? The changes the best for you guys, okay? Okay, just the changes, fine.
Okay.
And then if you've got questions on other parts of it, feel sure to jump in.
Certainly. So again, just, we had a city council workshop on May 27th where we shared the public input with you and got some additional council direction. The specific changes, and Ms. Gardner, if I may have the document camera, I would be hopeful. One of the topics of discussion was really the desire that we try to accommodate parking for vehicles, including recreational vehicles, in a second portion of the front yard. So, you know, under the current code, it's allowed in the driveway, and then it's allowed in the area between the driveway and the nearest side yard line, which is essentially this area here. The code enforcement staff sat down with the planners, and we looked at it, and we are proposing that we allow, in response to that direction, a second parking area for vehicles on the opposite side. It would be setback from the sidewalk, and also typically in a pattern, in this pattern, you would have, you know, somebody else's driveway over here, so in order to not block views, et cetera, for the person exiting from the adjacent driveway. So that's the, one of the primary changes. We're proposing that because of its location, and because, you know, when the house transfers or changes hands, someone in the future may not want to park vehicles there, that, you know, that not be a permanent surface, but instead be gravel or paving stones of a minimum size, as opposed to a hard surface like concrete or asphalt. But that was the accommodation there. We're also, in general, proposing that in either of these areas that you'd be able to use gravel or drain rock of at least a 9/16 inch minimum, so it doesn't get tracked out. So that's the primary set of changes. Again, we're looking at a relatively modest set of changes here altogether, and that concludes, I guess, our presentation on the changes.
Questions for Armando or Joe? No questions? Okay, this is a public hearing item, so I'll open it to the public. Anyone in the public want to speak to this particular item? Okay, oh, that's right, I'm sorry. We have a public comment from Mr. Smith. He received a correspondence that he would like to read into the record. Go ahead, Brett.
First of all, is Doug Barr here right now? Okay, this letter is from Doug Barr, and it says, "Councilman Member Smith, I am disappointed that the council has decided to go ahead with the proposed changes to the codes regarding parking and working on vehicles. As previously submitted to the city, these changes will make me a criminal. I will continue to work on my girlfriend's relatives and coworkers' vehicles on my property. I will continue to do major work as I build Jeeps. I will park disabled vehicles on my property. I disagree that all the changes required to be able to enforce the old code, residential neighborhoods are not zoned commercial, and any business could be cited. The city of Sparks requires a business license to run a business within the city. If business is conducted within the city without a license, cite them." I guess he's talking about himself, too.
Yeah.
"As for the park side of things, I think it went too far. As long cars are covered, as long as cars are covered, and I'm okay with making it an actual cover and not a plastic trap, who cares about the condition of the number of vehicles? Why is the city going after those who choose to recreate boats, motorcycles, et cetera? I believe I have the right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. My happiness comes from working on cars, Jeeps specifically. I should be able to pursue my hobby on my property as long as I don't jeopardize the safety of others. Look at the event that brings millions of dollars to the area every year. Hot August nights is one of, if not the most popular events in the county. Yet the proposed changes to codes will make criminals of anyone wanting to build such cars." And that'd be, unfortunately, can't attend, so we'll put this in the record.
Is there an address on there?
Oh, there is.
Just kidding.
You want to know where to look?
Yeah. Give it to Joe, he'll figure it out. Anyone else under public comment? Okay, seeing no further public comment, we'll close the public here and bring it back to council for action. Or questions? Anyone have questions? Okay, if not, looking for a motion. Mr. Lawson?
I have a question first, before you move on, Mr. Mayor. Dirt is going to be a big subject for me. It's tough. I personally, I'm having a hard time with the dirt part of this whole ordinance, and especially in the old part where I'm in Bucky. And then there's a lot of houses that are throughout Ward 2 that just have dirt front yards. So my concern is, yeah, I think we should do something about it, but we should also have some kind of appeal process or something that allows us, that person to come in and say, hey, I have a half an acre that is fronted on two sides, and I possibly, you know, there's no way I can possibly landscape that whole thing, besides the fact I use it for parking vehicles and have done that for, I mean, it looks more like the county than the city. And then for the other person that I worry about, is this takes effect January 1, if we're going to make this, you have to have your landscaping done by January, it seems kind of harsh to me that maybe we should put that off until next July 1 or something, and give them time through the spring. And then also have an appeal process for that. But through the whole, it just, the dirt thing bothers me a lot, and I just think we're setting ourselves up for failure, so...
It's a council's pleasure, I think, you know, we've always viewed these amendments, proposed amendments, you know, originating with, from that council workshop back in November. If there's a desire to change these, to eliminate this requirement altogether, you know, that's certainly your prerogative. With regard to the proposed effective date of January 1, you know, in general, when we have a landscaping requirement, typically for commercial, exclusively for commercial nowadays, you know, we always work with the property owner, realizing that, you know, the installation of living plant matter is best done, you know, when it makes sense weather-wise to do that. So I think you'd find some flexibility on the staff's part in terms of enforcing that if they have plans to install live material. It's not a part of this ordinance, but we are proposing additional code changes that would provide for the civil citation process to, as an alternative to the, you know, to filing any sort of criminal misdemeanor if we don't get compliance. As part of that, we are also contemplating establishing a hearing officer process, and we believe that it would be most appropriate for that hearing officer, and certainly they could, you know, the city council could provide them criteria in terms of this, but it would be appropriate for that hearing officer when someone appeals a, you know, the process would be, you know, the code enforcement officer contacts the property owner because they're not complying with this provision. And, you know, there's a determination that, you know, maybe there's hardship. They could appeal that, that basically, that citation, if you will. The hearing officer would have a chance to take into account the particular circumstances of that homeowner's situation and grant them relief. So that's where we see, you know, that ability to work with individual property owners would come in.
And that's what I'm more after. It's, the city manager and I spoke today, and he was telling me of an instance where the couples just basically aged, and to care for a large lot is extremely difficult for them. And I certainly don't want to make those people into violators of a new ordinance. So I don't, it's hard for me, and this is a struggle, really, a lot with this particular ordinance. And part of me, the libertarian Nevadan that grew up here that says, you know, I'll take care of me, you take care of you, and I'll be a good neighbor, but, you know, I don't, you don't enforce your views on me. So, I don't know. It's just tough for me. So I'd like to see a little more ability for someone to come state their case and say, this is the reason why I can't comply.
Well, one thing I would, I might suggest to you, to the city council, is, you know, we're proposing an effective date of January 1. If you don't, if we don't get back in front of you on a timely, in a timely fashion so that you can consider the civil citation process and see that we're making progress in terms of, you know, moving towards the, putting a hearing officer in place, then, you know, we could certainly revisit this topic in terms of the effective date of the ordinance between now and January 1.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have two more comments. We have some public comments that we would like to, I would like to reopen public comment. Anybody have a problem with that? Is it okay? I could reopen public comment again. Okay, I mean, go ahead and reopen public comment. Again, I have two more comments, but realize this will be the last time, so if anyone wants something under public comment, this is your last chance on this particular item. So I have two that want to speak. Kevin Christensen and Carol Pruner, come in, Kevin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, for the accommodation and the public comment. I'm a resident of 5573 Knobview Drive in Sparks. My name is Kevin Christensen. I've lived there now six years. There are three parcels of property in that village Knoll Estates that have been abandoned. And 1099 Village Knoll Drive was abandoned one year after we moved into the neighborhood. The lawn died, the landscaping died, the weeds grew up fantastically in the front yard. They, I don't know, in this, in this dry climate, how they did so well. Last year, my wife and I took upon ourselves to go down there and pull all the weeds out of the yard because it was so unsightly. Over the last two years, the house has been vandalized to the extent that somebody kicked in the side garage door, the internal garage door into the house. And one day I was walking by, and the front door was wide open, and I admittedly illegally trespassed and went into the house, found it full of liquor bottles, beer cans, the refrigerator had been turned on its side, a fire had been set in the bathtub, all the mirrors... all the mirrors in the house have been smashed, the light fixtures have been pulled from the ceilings, huge portions of the drywall in that building have been torn away. The front window is now boarded up with an ugly piece of plywood, and it's just a nightmare. At 5572 Ash Rock, the only living thing in the front yard there is Russian thistle as a ground cover and a struggling yellow rose bush. And recently, on, in a home on Rainwater Court that was abandoned in Janu- January of this year, I had to go to the backyard because a portion of my fence had come loose, and so I had to trespass into that backyard. It is full of highly flammable dried weeds, and something has got to be done about that. We've had problems on our street on Knollview driveway with recreational vehicles being permanently parked on that street. One vehicle was parked there for four years in the same location, and the man had the gall to run an electrical cord across the sidewalk into his, into his recreational vehicle, you know, causing a trip and fall accident possibly. I'd appreciate some enforcement of these codes and some teeth. Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. Carol Pruner? Can you make that a little louder? Even Mayberry heard that.
My name is Carol Pruner, and I live at 1935 Brunetti Way. It's a two-block-long cul-de-sac at the end of 19th. We probably have more dirt yards on that street than anywhere, but I'm only worried about my end because now four out of the eight are dirt and weeds and trash and things going on and on and on. And the neighbor next door that I complained about built the fence longer and higher than it was in defiance, and I just don't understand why that we can't enforce something to make these people at least cut down the weeds. And I thought, I love the idea of having, I have DG, not all over my yard, but I have DG, and I've got curbstone, and I've got bark chip and rocks, and I do everything to conserve on water. But it makes it real hard when everybody else, again, down on my end of the block for some reason, seems to be growing their own little weed crop. And I was very excited that, I didn't see anything proposed different, or I don't know if everything that's on that paper I got last time is what you are going to be working on, but then I don't know if we have any code enforcement officers other than the one man that spoke today, because that's why I can't get anything done. After the first man came out and sighted the neighbor next door, nobody was there to follow up, and he defiantly carries on. I had my lot surveyed by a surveying company, and the fence is mine, and he is screwing and nailing stuff all over this and building it nine feet tall and so on, and yet I can't get any help. I was told by somebody in the city I should get my chainsaw out, which I do have, and saw it right off. And the urge is there. We have been trying to help some of the people in the neighborhood. We have a lady across the street whose husband had a terrible stroke. We're helping her to mow the grass. We have this man next door who's at least 12 years younger than me, if not younger, and so we're helping to chop his tree down and that, get some of the branches that are growing through into our yard. He did actually chop off, over the space of six months it took him to take a little tree this big around down that's coming through our fence, and he's one of the weed people that has weeds three feet high and so on, and it just creates a terrible, terrible hazard in the neighborhood. I mean, you open the windows and all the dirt blows in, you know? And I know that water is expensive, and I know that. You can learn to be conservative and do things with rock and DG and some of the things I've done. Thank you.
Thanks, Carol. Appreciate it. Okay, anyone else? Public comment? Last chance, going once, going twice. Anybody? Gone. Okay, bring it back to council for action. Next question's Ms. Ratty.
I don't have a question, I'm just going to speak in support. We have a real problem in our neighborhoods, and we have increased the code enforcement team to three, so that's the exciting news. That's threefold increase.
Two. One. Free, gone.
Third coming. We've added a third code enforcement positions, or we've, we're hiring a third code enforcement position, so we are adding resources. But I really do understand the libertarian view. I, I get it, but I, I believe that that "don't tread on me" ethic also applies to the fact that these folks who are neglecting their properties, particularly absentee landlords who allow renters to come in and just not do anything and take the highest amount of dollars that they can get for the least amount of effort, are dragging down property values, whatever quality of life. It's the day in and day out, living in the same neighborhood with these properties where you cannot get anything done. And so I do believe that we have to give our staff some tools to maintain not an elevated standard. We're not talking about Beverly Hills here. We're talking about some minor adjustments that maintain the quality of our neighborhoods. So I feel like this is something that we must do. I feel like it's something that we should have done a long time ago, and I hope that we can support it today. So I'm ready. Well, it looks like Mr. Smith has a comment as well.
Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I don't think it's fair that the council members get the phone calls, and then we call Joe and put him on the spot, and then we don't have any teeth behind anything we do. I think Julie hit it right on the button there. It is a quality of life, and it's for, it's also a quality of life for the people that are being imposed upon. And they're the ones that are calling, and then they're calling us, and they're calling you, and I, and I know your voicemail is full every day. So I believe we need to do something and try to take care of the, they're eyesores is what they are, and, and I certainly wouldn't want my neighbor parking his cars in the lawns and working on his cars, and he wouldn't because we have an HOA. Not all of them have HOIs. So I, I support this.
Yeah, Joe, I think you have job security. I don't see a problem. There's always issues out there, and I, I agree with Ron and Julie. We've got to do something. Sooner or later, something's got to happen here. You know, and I understand it's difficult for some people, but, you know, this is not Iraq. We're not going to kill anybody because they got dirt in their front yard. We're going to work with them and try to help them do something if they can't afford it. I understand that. Nobody's going to die here if we enforce this a little better than we have. And like I said, sooner or later, something's got to happen or nothing ever will happen if we don't do something, so. Any other questions, comments? Looking for a motion? Mr., Ms. Ratty?
I move to approve Bill 2680 to amend Chapter 7.16 nuisances, including the addition of a property preservation section and Chapter 20.35 recreational vehicle storage of the Sparks Municipal Code.
Mr. Carrigan?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Carrigan to approve where we at 11.1, Bill Number 2680. Any further discussion? Mr. Lawson?
I'm going to hold Armando to the appeals process.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Ratty?
And I was going to add, I'd be happy to consider a delay in implementation if we don't have the appeals process in place, because I, I also think that having an appeals process, particularly for low-income seniors, is going to be critically important.
Yep. Okay, any discussion, any questions? Okay, seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
11.2 is PCN 14016, consideration of and possible approval of Resolution Number 36, 3264, a resolution adopting a master plan amendment to change the land use designation for 4D use AC to mixed use on a site totaling approximately 43.8 acres located at 6,000 Vista Boulevard in Sparks. Ms. Melby, thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. I'm Karen Melby, Senior Planner. Actually, 11.2 and 11.3 are the same property, so I don't know if the council wants to address those separately or together today. It's up to you. We can.
Do them together.
I would ask for the mayor's.
How would I ask for the mayor's?
Since he's chatting, right?
Go ahead, do it.
Today before you is a consideration and possible action for a master plan amendment to change the land use designation for, from four dwelling units per acre to mixed use, and also a zone change, which would be from A40 agricultural to new urban development. This property is a triangular shape property that's located on, this would be Vista Boulevard. This down here would be the Kylie Detention Dam, to give you some reference. Over here is Wingfield Springs. Like I said, they are requesting a master plan amendment to mixed use. And then on the zone change, the property is currently A40 agricultural, and they are requesting to make it a new urban development. The subject property was reviewed, was reviewed as part of the Kylie Ranch Northeast Golf Community Plan Development Handbook. A final handbook was approved by council on October 20, 2003. Residential density for this approximately 44-acre was proposed to be four dwelling units per acre, a proposed number of units of 158. Though it was part of a handbook, this property was never zoned NUD or New Urban District because the property owner wanted to retain their agricultural tax exemption. The focus of the handbook was on a proposed golf course, which never was developed, so the handbook was never recorded. A neighborhood meeting was held in May, and nobody attended that neighborhood meeting. This went to regional planning for the master plan amendment on, and was found in compliance or conformance with the master plan in July 20, on July 23rd. As discussed, discussed in the staff report, staff finds that the proposed master plan and also zone change are in compliance with the findings. Do you, I do want to remind you that you will have to make two separate motions.
Yeah.
That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Well, with no opposition, it sounds pretty good, Karen. Questions for Karen on either 11-2 or 11-3? Okay, seeing none, we'll open the public hearing on 11.2. Anyone want to speak to 11.2? Melissa, come on down.
For the record, Melissa Lindell with Wood Rogers, representing the applicant. Karen did a great job of explaining the project. We did have a nice, long visit during our neighborhood meeting when, waiting for people to show up, and nobody did, so we got to go over a lot of things. But with that, if the master plan amendment and the zoning goes through, then our next step will be to develop a tentative handbook, and then we'd be back in front of you with a more detailed project. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thanks, Melissa. Appreciate questions. Anyone else? Public comment? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment, bring it back to council for action on 11.2. Mr. Carrigan?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move to approve Resolution Number 3264, certifying the master plan amendment associated with PCN 14016, based on the findings MP1 through MP4, and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the report.
Mr. Smith?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Carrigan, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve PCN 14016, Resolution 3264. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, 11.3, any questions? Okay, this is a public hearing, so I'll open to the public. Anyone want to speak to 11.3? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for action. Mr. Carrigan?
Thank you, Mayor. Move to approve the rezone associated with PCN 14016, based on the findings Z1 through Z3, and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the report.
Mr. Smith?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Carrigan, seconded by Mr. Smith to approve PCN 104, 14016, Bill Number 2681. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. 11.4 is second reading, discussion and possible action on PCN 14012, Bill Number 2682, an ordinance to change the zoning from R5 multiple, multiple family residential to PO professional office on a site approximately 1.6 acres in size located at 2405, 2415, and 2435 Pyramid Way, Sparks, Nevada, and other matters properly relating there to. Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, council members. Tim Thompson, Senior Planner, for the record. Before you today is a request for a rezoning. The property is located here on the northwest corner of Pyramid and York. The property was originally developed in 1995 as a professional office complex. The zoning was R5 at the time, as it is today. Offices are permitted use with an approved special use permit. The master plan land use designation on the property is office professional, and so with this request, the, the property owner would actually be bringing the property into conformance with the, the land use. I believe that you all have a copy of the letter that was submitted from the gentleman associated with the Masonic Lodge. It's my understanding that there is a recorded document between the two properties, which in essence has the same conditions that were placed on the special use permit, and so that is an enforcement mechanism or tool for the property owners. However, it is our belief that once the rezoning is, should it be approved, that the special use permit and those conditions would in essence be terminated. So staff and the planning commission are recommending approval for this, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Mr. Lawson?
Tim, by change, does that any way affect the Masonics Lodge shared parking?
It does not.
I'm, I'm just confused on the letter from Mr. Strode, so I wish he was here to tell us about it, but it, it seems to me that it's already there, what they're asking for. So I'm not sure where the consternation is from their side, but that's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Yeah, you answered my question. Mrs. Strode isn't here, right? Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Public hearing, I'll open to the public. Anyone want to speak to this particular item? Seeing none, I'll close it to the public and bring it back to council for action, or questions? Questions, anyone? Okay, looking for a motion? Mr. Lawson?
I move to approve the rezone request associated with DCN 14012 to change the zoning on 1.6 acres from R5 multi-family residential to PO professional office, adopt findings Z1 through Z3, and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report.
Have a second? Ms. Ratty?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Lawson, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty to approve PCN 14012, Bill Number 2682. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thanks, Tim. Steve, close the door. Comments from the public? Anyone want to speak under comments from the public? You've had a lot of chances today. Yes, sir. Come on down.
My name is Bill Wagner, and my question to the group here is about the beautification project that is going on in this town. Is there a budget or anything for it?
Which beautification project?
Well, you know what I'm saying is that I thought we were going to clean up some of the areas around here, either the home areas, we were going to get after those folks, or ourselves. I mean, there's a lot of areas that the city owns, that there's trees down, there's roots sticking out all over the place. I mean, are we going to do anything about this, or are we going to work on this? Do we have a project? Do we have a budget?
You know, we, I don't think we have a budget per se for that particular area. It's in our budget to work on these things. That's why we passed, passed the new ordinance to make it, to put some teeth in our ordinance so we can help clean up the areas of homes and those kind of things. As far as cleaning up parks and those kind of things and roots and trees, you know, we, we try to budget for those every year in our annual budget to do as much as we can. We've been a little behind the eight ball, I guess I want to say, because of revenues, but we're trying to do those as, as much as possible. Are there any particular areas you're concerned about, and you want to maybe email somebody and let us know, and we can take a look at it?
Well, I really can't pinpoint any areas, okay? I would assume that all of you would be driving around, and you can see it yourselves. I mean, you really can. And you can pick it out.
Well, you know, and I appreciate what you're saying. On the other hand, if you see something, please call us, because we can't, we don't see everything.
I understand that.
There's only six of us, and, you know, if you see something you think's wrong, just call the city manager, call me. me. In fact, he'll give you one of his cards.
Okay.
Call me, and we'll, we'll look into it and try to take care of it for you.
Well, I appreciate that, and I think it would really help this town out, and I think that before you folks can start nailing, or not, I don't mean nailing, but asking some private owners to move cars and stuff like that, we have to clean up our act a little bit too, and, and show them that we're also doing it at the city's side.
True story.
Okay. You agree with that?
Agree with that 100%. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
If you want to grab his card, and then if you have...
I will do that.
If you have some problems in the future, please call us.
Thank you very much.
Can anyone else under public comment? Comments from the city council and the city manager? Okay, seeing none, with no further business, we're adjourned.
I'll call the Sparks Redevelopment Agency meeting for August 25, 2014 with a roll call, please.
Chairman Smith.
Here.
Agency members Ratty.
Here.
Lawson.
Here.
Martini.
Here.
Carrigan.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
Agency Attorney Adams.
Here.
Agency Manager Friskel.
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'll open up the public comment. Anybody in the audience wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the agency. Approval of the agenda.
Move to approve, Mr. Chair.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Approval of the minutes, consideration of possible, possible approval of the minutes of the regular Sparks Redevelopment Agency meeting for July 14.
Move to approve, Mr. Chair.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Reports of claims and bills approved for payment through June 5, 2014, I'm sorry, from June 5, 2014 through August 6, 2014.
Move. Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, I'll open it up to the public. Anybody in the public wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we bring it back to the agency. Comments from agency members?
Ice bucket challenge.
Right after the meeting. Without further objection, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Yes.
[music]
One. Okay, on three, 24. Three, 24. One. Two. Three. Ah! Okay. Quick. Oh! Oh! Hey! Hey! [applause] [music] [applause] 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 One. Okay, on three, 24. Three, 24. One. Two. Oh, wait a minute. Hey, hold on. Three. Ah! Okay. Quick. Oh! 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 [laughing] [applause] 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 [applause]